Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us. Welcome. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. It's our combined work session council meeting with the holiday later this week. So please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Miskman? Mayor Abu-Wasli?
Present.
Ms. Spencer?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Sternen?
Here.
Thank you. This time we have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. First on the agenda this evening is a presentation from the Cedar Rapids Metro Economic Alliance regarding the Regional Collaborative Growth Initiative. And Ryan, you're making the introduction.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Jody Schaefer with the Economic Alliance is here to provide an update regarding the growth initiative. Jody's position was actually one of the key recommendations that came out of the DCI report that was jointly done with Cedar Rapids, Marion, and Hiawatha and the Economic Alliance as the mayor has pushed this initiative. So I'll let Jody get going.
Welcome.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for having me today. All right. So as mentioned, my name is Jody Schaefer, and I'm the Director of Talent Attraction, which is managing the Collaborative Growth Initiative. So before I just jump right into kind of where we're at today, I wanted to go through a little bit of history. It may have been a bit since you've talked about Collaborative Growth Initiative. And just to remind you, this is a collaboration between the cities of Cedar Rapids, Marion, and Hiawatha. It stemmed from the mayors coming together and recognizing that we had potential workforce issues, population issues. This is not unique to our region, but across the state. So you see, the 8,200 residents have been lost since 2021 to outmigration. And what's even more alarming about that number is that most of the people that are leaving are college-educated young professionals. So what that means for our businesses is, as people retire, we will not be able to fill those positions at the same rate that we have in the past. We're already experiencing some workforce challenges, and that will only continue to get worse, especially if we do nothing about it. So the mayors, again, came together and they established talent attraction as a regional priority. And the timeline for this is as follows. So in August of 2023, the Collaborative Growth Initiative was announced, and they announced that they would be partnering with DCI, which is a leading placemaking marketing firm. So they do this kind of work for a number of regions across the country and in Canada. And they came in March of 2024. That study was approved, and they came and they did focus groups and just did a study for kind of perceptions inside and outside of the area. What's the opportunity to do this work here in the region? What it would cost? And that also established that somebody would need to manage this effort. And so in April of 2024, the Economic Alliance agreed to fund my position, and I started in January of 2025. So in April of 2025, really from January to April, I was meeting lots of people, as you can imagine, and we created a Workforce Innovation Council. We met for the first time in April. We've since had three meetings. And they're really helping to advise on things like, what should our target market be for this effort? Are the initiatives we're looking at, is it resonating with people? All of the things that you would imagine would come up, they advise on those issues. Throughout May, I did an RFP process, so a Request for Proposal from marketing firms to do the talent attraction work. And we had, sorry, 15 firms were sent the RFP process, both nationally and locally. 11 submitted proposals, and then we were able to secure a marketing firm for this work. So going forward in year one, we have established a two-pronged approach. And this is based on the goals that were set forth by the mayors. Specifically, they wanted some quick wins. We didn't want something that was really squishy and we're unsure of the results. So we looked at quick win opportunities. We also wanted a talent attraction site up and running by the end of the year. So when you think about the state of Iowa, they're doing talent attraction. They have a talent attraction site and a campaign. We now would have that as well. So the talent attraction website and marketing campaigns, that's a pretty traditional way of doing this work. It gets us a lot of brand awareness, but unfortunately, it's difficult to establish the return on that investment. Residents would have to, they'd have to move and tell us they moved, and sometimes they just don't do that. So one of the things that we looked at was Make My Move, which is an organization that started in remote work. So they were moving remote workers to different regions throughout the country. It stemmed out of COVID, and it continues today, and it's running quite successfully in several different regions, and I'll show you that in a moment. The beauty of Make My Move is it is a proven ROI strategy, because those people that move, Make My Move actually checks to see that they're working where they say they're working, that they are getting the salary that they say they're making, and it checks to make sure that they have actually moved and signed a lease or gotten an apartment or house. They look at all of that. So the talent attraction website and marketing campaigns that work will take approximately three years. In year one, they'll do collateral development and the talent attraction website launch. So we should see a soft launch of the website in December. In year two and beyond, they'll maintain the website, and they'll work on digital marketing strategies, targeted marketing campaigns. Make My Move, a little bit about Make My Move, because I'm sure you're most unfamiliar with this program. It's not one a lot of people know about, but Make My Move, again, will be a pilot program. So if we're successful in this, this might be something that we do throughout the upcoming years, but it is a pilot program. There are 1.5 million people that visit Make My Move each year, and there's currently 22 million remote workers in the U.S., which is up from 5 million in 2020. So it is a market ripe for opportunity to bring spending and tax dollars to our region. A little bit more about the audience. So the household income of these remote workers is about 116,000. A lot of people mention retention. How likely are we to retain these residents? They actually have a 90% retention rate within the first year. And then many will bring a partner who will contribute to workforce here in the region and children. So a 2.3 average household size. These people are fast movers, which is how we get our quick wins. They move anywhere from three to six months, versus somebody who's moving for a job could take anywhere from one to three years. So one example of how strong of a program Make My Move can be is Indiana. So we looked at Indiana because they are actually doing this in 34 Indiana communities. The state of Indiana is helping to fund this initiative. They have generated 63.5 million in economic output. They brought in 1,600 new residents from 44 different states and five countries. So pretty impressive work that Indiana is doing in this space. So how do we get there? We get there through some funding, and the mayors and the city managers have come together for a couple of different meetings to talk about how we fund this initiative. As you can imagine, it's not inexpensive to do this. It takes quite a bit of money to market a region and especially to sustain it over three years. So I'll talk through kind of how we're looking at this for our future and the first year specifically. So if you look at the city detail, I'll just walk you through the graph and the colors. So the red is the city of Cedar Rapids. The purple is the Economic Alliance. One thing to note about Economic Alliance is they are funding current retention efforts as well as staff. You'll also see the yellow line is Marion. The kind of greenish-yellow line is Hiawatha. And then I also have an other line at the very bottom. It's flat, because we really have no idea if we'll get this funding. So this would be grant funding, foundations. It might be other cities joining the initiative. And there is opportunity there, but we just have no idea how much opportunity might be there. The blue line is where we see a potential opportunity for funding, and that blue line represents public interests, or I'm sorry, private business, private business interest. So in the beginning, we will see the cities contributing for the first year, and then we'll start to reduce that amount in years two and three, and the additional funds coming from private business. And that will be the goal, and that will take place through fundraising initiatives. So in the first year, Cedar Rapids will contribute 327,500, Marion 87,000, and Hiawatha 21,600. These numbers came as a result of the mayors and city managers talking about TIF special revenue and per capita. So it's a combination of those two figures. They felt this was a fair measure of what each city should contribute. In the year two and three, in 2026 and 27, I estimated 60% of the first-year spend in year two, and then 40% in year three for the cities. It shows that the cities are still committed to this effort, but it is an inverse relationship in year two and three with private funding taking up the bulk of the funding. So this next graph is really just showing the cities combined. That's the red line. And then private funding is the blue line again, and Economic Alliance is the purple line. And lastly, a pie chart really showing the same thing. So this is overall spend for the next three years. You can see on the right, the cities combined are looking at about 900,000 in spend. Private business, about 924,000 in spend, with the EA about 600,000 in spend. So what are the next steps for this initiative? City funding approval is the next step. We hope to earn some gain earned media and generally generate public conversations. So even from the city council meeting in Cedar Rapids, a couple articles were picked up about the initiative. So it is starting to gain some publicity and some momentum around it. And then we will move on to the fundraising campaign in the latter part of this year. Any questions?
Thank you. Okay, questions for Jody. Steve?
Do I have the terminology right? Move my way?
Make my move.
Oh, make my move, sorry.
Yep.
So on Make My Move, it kind of seemed like Indiana has a roadmap out there already that has been successful. So is there a reason that the state of Iowa doesn't divert more of its talent acquisition money instead of doing it in the manner they are, which can't be measured? You can't measure the ROI versus moving in this, shifting it in this direction if you have this, you got this metro area, and you get a few more metro areas doing that and jumping on board as well? Is there a reason the state would not shift in that direction since Indiana seemed to be so successful with it?
I think it's just a different philosophy, and we did talk to the state about Make My Move. They're intrigued. I think they're interested, and they're still exploring, you know, different ways of doing this. So I think we do have an opportunity to do something a little bit different that might raise some awareness around something that they might want to look at in the future. But right now, they did not want to invest in this. They felt that it would show favoritism towards a certain community, and so we'll keep the conversation open.
Are there any other cities in the state of Iowa using this philosophy?
There is one, and I'm blanking on the name of it. It's a small community. So Make My Move actually works with several really small communities, and they'll move like five families, and they're satisfied with that.
Okay.
So Kentucky is doing this, and they're having a huge amount of success as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sarah?
Yeah, I do.
Just a couple of questions. Can you explain a little more on the Make My Move? Like, what exactly do they do? Like, people enter this to say, I'm willing to go move somewhere? Or they partner with, like, what is this organization?
Yep. So it's a website, and actually, you can, after this meeting, you can check it out. We are on their site. It's live, but they haven't promoted us yet. So you could find our community. You could find Marion on the site. And so it brings all the communities that are partnering with them to one website called Make My Move. And it's interesting. I've been talking to state of Iowa candidates that are coming through their talent attraction initiatives, and I had one yesterday ask me if we're part of Make My Move. So they are generating quite a bit of awareness, because they're doing digital targeting for leads. And so then they're going to that one site, and they can find all the communities that partner. So the difference is, they offer incentives. So there are incentives that are given. So think Parks and Recreation. There's usually a relocation incentive, which part of this money would go towards relocation incentive. You name it, they would offer it. Maybe sports tickets to different events throughout the community. The University of Iowa might offer Hawkeye tickets. But that's kind of the incentive to get people to look at the different communities.
And then build out, I'm assuming, then I'll look, but is that, like, we're providing the information then that is the backfill to that website about our communities so that these people are looking, that they're coming? Does it link to, like, the city, or does it link to, like, a special page where we each build?
Yes, it links to a special page, and then they can get more information about each city. So Marion, Hiawatha, and Cedar Rapids all have their own page. And then they go into a portal if they're interested, and we've actually hired somebody on a consulting basis to foster those leads. So sort of a recruiter who will talk to those individuals who are looking at us as a community. We will build out a welcome program. And then if somebody moves to Marion, they're going to get their incentives in a welcome package and, you know, a very inviting situation for them as they move into the region. Because part of this is retention, too. You don't want to bring them into the community and then forget about them. So we'll need to build out some retention efforts as well, and that is in the funding I'm proposing.
Okay. And so then, my second question is, in the overall initiative, is this it? Or is this the first thing you talked about? Like, you wanted some quick wins. Is there, like, a next, is there next thing? Other activities that go along beyond this?
So Make My Move is the quick win. And again, this is a pilot program. If it goes well, they also do job mover campaigns. So if you think about the greater region, some of our most needed positions are advanced manufacturing, engineers, healthcare. So some communities are doing campaigns with Make My Move for engineers, for healthcare workers. Those take a lot longer, but they can do those through Make My Move as well. Or we could do them through the marketing firm that we hired, and we would do kind of a digital strategy similar to what the state of Iowa is doing. So that sort of remains to be seen. Some of it remains to be seen based on the results from this first year.
Okay. And then, final question. Is the request that we will have, so we've had funding requests that we've done to get to this point, is that something where it's all based on just the Make My Move part of it? Or could it, like, when do we know the various investments that are going to be requested from the cities along the way beyond this?
Beyond this year? So this year is for Make My Move, but it's also for the talent attraction website. So again, there'll be a pretty strong effort to put together a talent attraction website. Part of that website will be a job board. So employers, we know they'll get excited about the job board, because they get space, they get publicity. They can be a sponsor of the job board. They get all their jobs out there, right? It also gives them a resource to send candidates to. When you're thinking about recruiting candidates to the area, and they're not from the area, they're going to be able to go to this community resource to look at housing, to look at things to do, all the things that they're thinking about outside of the job, which we don't really have today. So that's the other piece of it, Make My Move, and then the talent attraction website. Some of the next year and the following year is really dependent upon how successful we are in fundraising. We're fortunate. We have some mayors who are very good at fundraising and have agreed to help with that effort. And so we'll be going out to our business partners with the Economic Alliance, with the different cities, and, you know, promoting this opportunity. Yep.
Grant?
Yeah. Jody, you spent, what, four or five months just increasing your situational awareness?
Yes.
I'm sure that was like diving into some real deep water to try to understand who's what and all the different trends and issues that are impacting the employee base and our needs. In that process, did you identify any skill or expertise deficit that we principally have in this area? Because I think you mentioned nursing and some other areas. But has that come into focus yet? And, you know, does that then inform strategies of the kind of talent we have to go after?
Yeah, definitely. At the Economic Alliance, we have economic development tools, and it talks about shortages, and it does some forecasting. So some of the areas where there's going to be high demand is management roles, engineering. We know advanced manufacturing is our number-one industry. And all the advanced manufacturing companies that I've been to say the same thing. We can't get highly qualified skilled engineers. We can, but we can't get enough of them, and we're stealing from each other, basically, to find talent. So we know that. We know when we talk to the healthcare providers, that's not unusual anywhere in the nation, really. But we have the same problem getting healthcare workers. Not, I'm not talking about physicians. That's a different problem that the state's working on. But even beyond nurses, CNAs, really any healthcare worker that you have to educate and move them into those roles. So I mentioned those two areas, because that's really what I've been hearing as we go out and about, and also what we see on our forecasting tools, our economic development forecasting tools.
Thanks.
Yep. But yes, that would be a target market. There's two ways to go. You could do targeted marketing for those areas, or you could do it, you know, really just a broad strokes. Here's general awareness of our area. Try to sell the community. So that's something that the Workforce Innovation Council will be toying with over the next several months to figure out what the target market really should be.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jody. Go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor, really quick. Just in the packet, we did include, we had $40,000 included in the budget for the fiscal year that starts today, based on some initial estimates from the Economic Alliance. As Jody was coming in and starting to develop and build the activities and work with the Workforce Council, that's now gotten us the cost that we have. So the request from this initiative is an additional 47,000. So if council, we'd need council direction on that, and then we can get that programmed on a future council agenda.
Okay, so we need this direction tonight?
Yep, if council's supportive.
Okay, and we do that now or a later time?
It would be now, and then we would program it at a future council meeting to pass the...
Okay, so we just need a consensus. Is there anyone who has any strong opposition to the staff working on this and bringing back a formal proposal to vote on? Go ahead.
Yeah, Ryan, just a question on that. That would then be additional funding out of our current FY that just started today.
Correct.
Okay.
You know, to me, this is a really important project. It's a great collaboration among the communities in this metro area. It's really the most serious that I've seen the region be about a collaboration to attract talent. And we hear from our employers all the time that, you know, they can't find specific skill sets at all levels, but also that, you know, that they could grow, they could be more of an economic contributor to the region, but they can't without the right employees and the right talent. And what we have found is that, well, obviously, we're competing in a global market for talent. Our population is shrinking. It's not growing, and so we need to have people move here. But we're not very good at telling our story. We've come a long ways as a region at giving people an amazing quality of life, and I think Marion is the example of that. We're the leader in that regionally. I'm not shy about saying that. We have really prioritized quality of life, quality of place. We've done a lot of work to make our region, our city attractive, but also to help the region be attractive. Now we need to be able to tell that story to outsiders, because they have a blank image of who we are and what we have to offer. And so that's a good opportunity. We can create that story to fill the void, to create that perception that we want people across the country to have about who we are, and it's much easier to even share that story today with, you know, with social media and the digital world. It's much easier to create that perception that we want. We just need to be focused together as a group, and I think this is an amazing opportunity. Jody certainly, she hit the ground running. I think it was a great contribution to the project for the EA to make the decision to hire Jody and to fund her position. But then she can't do it without the support of the communities to get it off the ground and to show progress and show results to the business community, who has a real vested interest in this project succeeding. And so that's what this ask is, is to help create that seed money to get the project off the ground and then show results to the business community. And hopefully, they will then see the benefit to their bottom line and invest and keep it going for the long term. So did I say that correctly, Jody?
You did, and I would just say that having three cities come together is pretty unique. You know, you often see private business coming forward with the money first. So the fact that they're able to see that collaboration and the three cities focused on exactly the same thing is a huge feather in the cap of the mayor. So thank you, Mayor, for that.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go back to the question for the consensus. Is there anyone who has strong opposition or is opposed in any way to us moving forward with looking at this and bringing back something to vote on? Anyone have any strong comments? Okay. I think you have your direction. Thank you. Thank you, Jody. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is a presentation from the Marion Planning and Zoning Commission. Nikki, are you the chair now of the?
I am the chair.
Congratulations.
Voluntold chair. It's usually how our commissions work, as if, yeah. Decide on one, and Nikki was the chosen. So yes, this is our chair for the Planning and Zoning Commission, Nikki Wilcox. She will do a presentation on what that group reviews, and then I will give the one for the zoning board of adjustment.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, Nicole, Mayor and Council. Awesome. Okay. So we do currently have nine members on the board. However, one is moving. So that will be Landis Wylie, so we will have a vacant spot. He is on until July 5th, and he just sent in the paperwork that he needs to roll off. So while we were full, we will have one vacancy that we are working to fill. And we do meet, so the second Tuesday of every month here at 6:00 PM. So just to give first a little background, yes, so I'm Nikki Wilcox. I have, I think, started P&amp;Z last August, and I think it was then that I also got voluntold to be the chair, which I happily, of course, said yes to. So I'm still in my first year, and so it has been honestly a wonderful learning experience, and I have amazing tenured people around me. I feel like it's been a good time to join the P&amp;Z Commission with the comprehensive plan. But so, yeah, I just started last August. I actually purposely talked about the whole Make My Move, born and raised in this area, but I left for 11 years and came back in 2019. I will admit, I came back kicking and screaming, but I told my husband that we will only move back here if we move to Marion, just because I saw what Marion was doing, what Marion was becoming. And as I saw the Up-Down Plaza and what's going on in Tower Terrace, I was that person that actively got on the city of Marion's website and was like, I want to join a commission, because I want to help be a voice. Just seeing what Marion has already done, I want to be a part of that to help grow it. And as Mayor always says, "Reach higher," that really resonated with me. So that's why I joined Planning and Zoning Commission. So, you know, planning and zoning, you guys know, you know, we're really about the look and the feel of the city. And I have learned that sometimes I get a little too ahead of myself when we are zoning things. I'm like, but what could go there? It's like, Nikki, not yet. Like, let's zone it properly, and then we can talk about what economic development can go in there. But to me, it's all about being proactive and what's the vision of the city. And as we're all working together, let's make sure that we are doing the vision together, and it's not just a hodgepodge, you know, of random buildings, random developments. We want to make sure that it's very uniformed. We want to make sure that it's very uniformed. So, you can see a lot of them, you know, conditional use, site design has been a lot of our focus, but really, the big thing has been the comprehensive plan, which I know we've had a lot of joint meetings. That has been very motivating for the council, especially what's going on on Tower Terrace. At our last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we discussed for nearly an hour about the gas station zoning. And I think it was 57 minutes. A long time to talk about gas stations, but I just want you guys to know that that is just the motivation and the pride that the commission has when it comes to making these decisions. We don't take it lightly. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of cooperative discussion, some disagreements, but we all got to the final resolution. But that's just how much we care about this area. So, when things pop up on the agenda, we don't just, yep, sounds good, okay, pass, 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 pass. We are asking lots of questions, really diving deep into it, because it is really important to the commission, especially for entryways into Marion, on how that looks and feels. Uptown Plaza, absolutely amazing. The bridge that got redone by the old McDonald's, fantastic. We want to make sure that Tower Terrace has the exact same appeal, since that's another entry point, especially in the future when it extends and connects all the way. So, we are very passionate about making sure that that area is done right, because we want the larger vision. And just as a team, we want to do, have that whole reach higher and not just, okay, yeah, sounds good, sure, gas station can go here. We're being very, very strategic. Think, yeah, that was on my notes.
Okay. Do you want some questions?
I will try my best to answer them, yes.
I'll just start with saying thank you for volunteering. It's great to hear your story and how you got engaged and involved. I would say that, you know, even a decade ago, we didn't have that kind of resident involvement and engagement. And I think when the city reaches higher and we show that we are working to make this, you know, the best place to live, I think that that resonates with residents. And they then step forward and are encouraged to offer their talent and their, and their ideas and their energy. And you're an example of that. So, I really, really appreciate it. And also, your, what you've talked about just not only highlights the increased resident engagement that we have in all our processes, which just makes us that much more successful because we're involving everyone in the conversation, but also just the level of, the level of the conversation. We've, we've grown up so much as a community that we now have that luxury and ability to have those conversations that are more long-term, more big vision. That's, that's always been my goal, getting us to this point where we can have those types of conversations and talk about where should the gas station go, where should this go, where should that go, and really build, build a premier community that we can all be proud of 20 years from now, looking back, and we can say we all did it the right way. So, thank you for your contribution to all that. And hopefully someday, we'll see you get on council and continue to offer your talent in other ways. So, questions for Nikki?
Nikki, just a comment. I mean, I spent several years on P&amp;Z and really enjoyed it. I think it's a fantastic way to get involved in the community. So, I agree with your assessment of doing that. I did not have to get involved going through a comp plan. So, I think I kind of just want to tip my hat to everybody on P&amp;Z, knowing the additional amount of meetings and time that had to be put into that, because we're really at this critical phase of, you know, 24 and 25, and probably running into 26, making sure that we're getting everything put in place in the manner that we can look backwards. The biggest thing about P&amp;Z is making decisions and saying, if I look back at this 20 years from now, am I going to regret this decision? That's the way I always looked at it, and I kind of do to this extent here. But P&amp;Z, it's a little different, because, you know, you got one, kind of one shot at it. So, it's kind of like, if I look back at this, is that something I'm going to be proud of? And appreciate all your time involved in P&amp;Z and being the chair. Thanks.
Yeah, and I will just add that another very positive development in the last couple of years is having these touchpoints where you come in and all the, all the commissions and boards come in. And that way, it keeps us all on the same page, and it keeps reminding us that we're all one team. And we never used to hear from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, thank you, Ryan, for implementing this. And, you know, it's, it's so important that we're on the same page, and that the council, the commissions and the boards sort of hear from the council what our priorities are, so that those can be part of the discussion at your, at your meetings. And the decisions you make are very impactful on our residents and the city's operation and the city's, the services we provide. And so, making sure that the commission understands what the priorities are of the council is, I think, is critical. So, thank you for coming in and for doing that, and we look forward to future, future collaboration and working together.
I forgot. You reminded me of the whole collaboration. It's one thing we've added to the P&amp;Zs at the end of every meeting. Anything that we, you know, have recommended, we get a report in our meetings on how you guys voted for it. And so, when there are some items with P&amp;Z that are, again, where we have a lot of discussion, like the gas station, it is kind of nice to see when we see it up there, and it was like, vote seven to zero, seven to zero, seven to zero. It kind of almost gives us like, okay, like that little mini polite battle was worth it, because, you know, and then we had unanimous decision with the city council people. So, we added that as part of our standard agenda, just to see how you guys all voted on everything that we recommended. And I, at least me personally, has been very, very helpful, and just these discussions within planning and zoning are absolutely worth it.
Thanks, Nikki.
Thank you.
Nicole.
For the zoning board of adjustment, it is our five-member board. They range kind of from a lot of experience. So, Chuck Kent is our chairperson on that board. He's been on for about 50 years. We've got two members that hit that range of five to 10 years on our board. And then, we've got two that are around the six-month range. So, we've got a wide range of experience and knowledge from various backgrounds as a part of this board. They do meet every third Tuesday of the month as needed. Typically, they're meeting either nine to 10 months out of the year. There's usually, I was, a couple of meetings where there's nothing on the agenda, so they don't meet those months. As far as their activity goes, they are a quasi-judicial board, so they do make the final decision. Any appeals on their decisions do go to the Lynn County District Court. With that, they have both, their powers can fall under four different categories, one being appeals of the zoning official, then special exceptions. Some of the ones that fall under that are slight adjustments of a zoning district. If a road alignment had changed, based off of where the zoning might have been set, they do have the power to slightly shift that zoning to realign with the road alignment, or parking waivers. They did look at Marion Lofts and the Blair Sphere Senior Apartments, with both of those projects being low to moderate income housing. Data was brought in to show that, hey, these types of projects don't necessarily need, don't necessarily have parking that requires what's required by code. So, they present all that data to the board, and the board sits their reviews and goes, okay, based off of your numbers and projects with this many units, they are able to kind of waive some of those parking regulations. We don't do it often. There's a lot of data that does need to be provided to allow for that to occur. As you can see in 2024 and year-to-date this year, we haven't had requests for either of those. The ones we do see, the majority of are conditional uses. Most of those entail detached accessory structures, when we've got over 900 square feet on one property that was put in place a few years ago. And so, that's, that is the majority of the conditional uses that they are seeing. Otherwise, variances is the majority of all their cases. Most of those are setback-related. A lot of them are kind of front porches and stuff, but that number has declined, especially with the adoption of our trans, traditional zoning districts kind of in the heart of Marion, where you've got the original town and some of those older neighborhoods where those lots are smaller, and the houses were set closer to the property lines. So, by doing those slight modifications with our zoning ordinance, we have been able to reduce kind of the amount of variance needed, just to make sure those characters of those neighborhoods are kind of being maintained. Otherwise, they do get signage as well in variances. Sometimes it's the number of signs, sometimes it's the height or size of a sign. But those are the types of things that that group is reviewing.
And they have specific criteria. They have to, they guide their decisions, right? They have to fit certain criteria.
Yeah. So, they've got general criteria for all their reviews that they do, and then the conditional uses dive even a little further. So, there's about five criteria for the general, and then an additional five for conditional uses.
Okay, any questions for Nicole? Okay, thank you very much. Next item is our first public forum. I'd like to review the rules for the public forums. We do have two, two public forums at every meeting. The first one is for items that are listed on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. If anyone is here to address council on any item that is part of a public hearing, there will be time to speak during the public hearing. If anyone is here to address council on an item that is not on the agenda, there will be time at the end of the meeting in that public forum to address council. And the rules, procedure for all public forums, we ask you to please fill out the yellow card at the end of the table and hand it to the city clerk before you speak. Please approach the podium and speak into the microphone as the meetings are recorded. Please do not approach the dais where the council is sitting. If you have handouts, submit them to the city clerk for distribution to the council. Please help us preserve the meeting decorum by addressing the council as mayor and members of council. If you wish to speak, please know that you'll have a maximum of five minutes to speak, and you'll be reminded when you have one minute left. Please do not engage in speech or conduct that is eminently threatening to any person, or which incites violence, or which is obscene. Please avoid repeating comments or points that have been made by others. Please do not engage in conduct that is disruptive of the orderly progress of the meeting, or engage in speech or conduct which interferes with others' ability to participate in the meeting. Failure to adhere to these guidelines, or engaging in any speech which is disruptive, or a behavior which is disruptive will, after a warning, result in removal from the meeting. We appreciate everyone's cooperation with these guidelines. We'll now open the public forum for any comments on any topic that is listed on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. If anyone's here to address council, please come forward. Okay, since no one is coming forward, we will close this part of the meeting and proceed to the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through E4, resolutions 32440 through 32457.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through E4, resolutions 32440 through 32457. Discussion.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Mike, this might be for you. It's item D1, and it's just the extension of the library generator project. Do you have any insights to what's driving that delay? I know it says, memo says a part, but it is a unique part, sourced overseas, you know, a little context about what's driving the delay.
Sure. Kim might know more, but I'm assuming it's the entire generator.
Say, I'm sorry, say that again.
The actual generator.
Okay, all right. The whole thing.
Any other, go ahead, Steve.
I've got two, two quick questions. First one is on D8. This would probably be for Mike. So, this is the Seamar Trail Phase 5 project. I'm assuming that's the one from Menards to Mount Calvary Cemetery?
Yes, sir.
Now, I have been telling everybody all year this was going to be completed by the end of the year and be ready to write from Uptown Marion to Downtown Cedar Rapids in 2026. Am I understanding the write-up that that is not correct, that some of this construction may go into 2026?
It could be. At the next council meeting, we'll actually have a public hearing on this and go over all that information. It's gonna, the apparent little bit is PCI, which is a pretty big company.
Right.
So, it depends on what their schedule looks like. So, if they're busy, more of it will be done next year. If they're looking for work, then the delay of the bridge metal that has to come, they could potentially get it done. But until we have that pre-con and that information, we don't know. So, there is some environmental, there is some other stuff that took a little bit more time to get through, so.
That's, that's the other question I had, is why is all of this taking so much longer? I anticipated this would have all happened probably in the springtime, and so we're about three months behind schedule, a normal schedule. Second question I have was on E1. This would be for Nicole. This is on the project out at Artesian Road. So, tell, tell, tell me the succinct difference between SR2 and SR3. They're both defined as medium-density, single-family. So, exactly what is the, the difference between those two?
Yeah, so there's two differences when looking at the bulk regulations. You are correct that they're both medium-density, single-family residential. So, it's about 2,000 square feet in lot size difference, and then about 10 feet in lot width. So, the SR3 allows for a 60-foot minimum lot width, with, I believe it's 6,000 square feet total lot, whereas the SR2 is an 8,000-square-foot lot with a 75, 70-foot minimum lot width.
So, so, yeah, I looked at the layout of that. It didn't look, it looked like the lot sizes were very similar to what was south of it. So, this is actually going to be laid out for smaller lots. I know the corner lots even are larger lots in the layout they have, but some of the rectangular ones are actually going to be smaller-sized lots?
On the corners, I think they are pretty similar to what's been approved. They gain about six lots from the current approved preliminary plat by changing the zoning just on the very northern edge of it.
So, when you talk about that lot size, what would be the traditional, or the normal width of those lots under this SR3?
60-foot could be the minimum lot. They are proposing closer to 65 as the smallest width. They do have ones that go a little larger, though.
Can I ask one more question related to this? I noticed that they had a special P&amp;Z meeting. What drove this to request a special meeting for P&amp;Z?
A staff error. So, when it was published in the paper, instead of saying east side of Lucor Road, it said west side of Lucor Road. So, we had to push it, and we held a special meeting because of the staff error.
All right.
Happens once in a while.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions or discussion on the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. For the next portion of the meeting, I will turn over the meeting to the Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Asli's abstention as follows. Item D1, which is resolution 32458.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention. Item D1, resolution number 32458. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with the mayor's abstention. Now, pass the meeting back to the mayor. Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-20, amending various sections of the Marion Code of Ordinances, including section 238-13 regarding sound amplifiers in parks, sections, section 313-3.12 regarding operation of golf carts, section 133-1, and 133-19 regarding snowplowers for hire, and section 268-9 regarding private hauler license, licenses. Final consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final consideration of ordinance number 25-20. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving ordinance number 25-20, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, move to approve ordinance number 25-21, repealing various sections of the Marion Code of Ordinances, including Chapter 12, Article 11 regarding the Public Works Board, Section 50-2E regarding mayor appointments, and Section 50-34B2 regarding city manager appointments and supervision of other personnel. This will be the second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty five, dash, twenty one, repealing sections of the Marion Code of Ordinances, including chapter twelve, article eleven regarding Public Works Board. Section fifty, dash, two, E regarding mayor appointments. And section fifty, dash, thirty, four, B two regarding city manager appointments and supervision of other personnel. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty five, dash, twenty one, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. The next item is our second public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic. If anyone's here to address counsel, please come forward at this time.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. First off, I don't do this a lot, so.
Would you mind stating your name and address, please?
Yes, yes, Darrell Peterson. And I have Peterson Senior Health Insurance Service and Insurance Agency on Seventh Avenue on the corner of Sixteenth Street.
Welcome.
I moved into there and started renting that in ninety three. In twenty thirteen, I purchased the property and parking has always been an issue there. I approached or talked to Dave Hockett, I believe was a city, prior city employee about a year ago and talked to him about, you know, our issue there. There simply is not enough room for us to park. And then we got really busy in the fall and he sent me a letter in December. I missed it. I did not see it, that that's our busiest time of the year. But anyhow, so the, they denied it and the, they said it was twofold. That the property in question contains significant easements that limited usability for parking or other permanent alterations. And in fact, I met with the city here just last month and they looked everything up and there's only one easement back there. And that is where a semi drives through so they can unload at the next business, which is Marion Brush. And that's the only easements is there. There's nothing else back there. And my contractor has confirmed that, again, we confirmed that with the city. It also stated because of redevelopment potential. And I understand that they, you know, that maybe that area may be developed one day. But I guess in the, for, until it does, I would like to, or request that I can add like a hard surface parking back there, either blacktop or cement for my staff. My, my agency has grown a lot. We got ten people there, including myself. There's twelve parking places. In October, November, December, my office gets extremely busy with work in the Medicare market. We have six, eight people sometimes in our parking lot and my staff, we gotta go park on the gravel. And so that's what I'd like to do is put a little deck out there too. Where staff, if they want to go out, excuse me, I have a lot of allergies. For staff wants to go out on nice weather and so forth to, you know, go out there for lunch or take a small break or whatever. But again, if we, if we put the cement down, I got a bid on that for about seven or eight thousand. I met with Gage here a couple of weeks ago, or was it last week? I fried it. Yeah, it wasn't very long ago. And, you know, I explained everything to him and he says, well, I'm one of seven people. So he's, he's aware of what we're looking for. He suggested too, maybe if the city wants, is concerned that one day they have to tear it up, we could put a deposit with the city for the cost of it. My contractor was there and he, he said that he'd tear that up for a thousand, fifteen hundred bucks or something like that. So it's not a ton of money to do that if it ever needs to be. But again, I'm just asking for the use of it until something does happen. Somebody may want to redevelop that maybe in ten years, five years, twenty years, nobody knows. So we got, I've, we're in, in line to spend about three hundred and fifty thousand improving the building as I, I just have to do that as well. Just gutting the entire building and starting over with office spaces. And I have a gentleman here, John does my drawings and stuff. So John, if there's anything you want to add to it or?
Okay, all righty.
I guess that's it. And my apologies, I should have put together a handout and it's been a busy week and so everybody could have one. But I can bring one back if I can, can I drop something like that off to somebody at the city here? Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll do that sometime and later this week, just drop something off. So put everything together nicely. But again, we're just, I'm redoing my building, revamping it. I would just like to make the exterior look a lot nicer as well. And including the south end, if we, if we can do arduo down there, when people drive by in Sixth Avenue, it's going to look a lot nicer than it does now. We don't have weeds growing up and everything else, which that's what's happening on the city property now. I think that's it. I'll probably walk away thinking, oh, I missed something, but I think that's the, the gist of it.
Well. Go ahead, go ahead.
I was like, Gage, you know, from our conversation, did I miss anything?
I don't think I'm allowed to make comments during this part of the meeting, but or take any action, so.
Okay, well, I know you can't act anything, but I didn't know if there's anything else. Okay.
Yeah, well, first of all, congratulations on the, on the success of your business. That's first and foremost, you know, congratulations.
Thank you.
We can't take any action at this meeting. But it has to be on the agenda and published in advance. If anybody has questions, I suppose we can ask a question. Otherwise we will, you know, follow up with staff to see where it goes from here. But you have a question to start.
Yes.
And I, I'm looking at Google Maps, so that's about as detailed as I'm seeing this or whatever. I want on my map apps.
Yeah.
So do you have parking all like that front seventh and then comes down sixteenth and then on the backside two? Is it like a U around your building for parking?
No, I own, and that's why I'm here, because I only own five feet past my building. It's not a zero lot line, but I've got five feet on the end of that. So in the parking, there's actually four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. There's like ten parking spaces on the west side of the building. Now, it might look like more because there's a pad on the south end of it, a cement pad, but that's belongs to the city. When I talked to Dave here a year ago, he said, nobody's going to have any issues if you park on that. So we do, we do park on that, but even still, we do not have enough parking. I've had many people stop in, in like our, our busy time. The Medicare enrollment is October, November, December. And people stop in and they say, well, I tried to stop last year, but there was no place to park. I've heard that time and time again.
So when the, when the truck, the easement, the truck that's using, going to your neighbor across the street, do they use that, do they back in and out of that pad then? Is that what they're saying?
No, they just drive by, past the pad and, and on your view there, can you see that there's, the gravel?
Yeah.
Goes from sixteenth street to the next street.
Yeah.
They come down sixteenth, south, turn left on the gravel. And then they go over to Marion Brush and pull up on their cement and unload.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the only thing they do is they come through there.
Okay, okay.
They need to be able to get in and out.
Okay.
With their semis.
Thank you for that.
I just have one quick question.
Sure.
If, if the city lot wasn't there, if there was a building there, what would you be doing?
If there was a building there, I'd probably have to move.
Yeah.
And I've been there for, since nineteen ninety three.
Yeah.
I really don't want to move.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you getting the chance to visit.
Appreciate it. Anyone else to address counsel, please come forward. Okay, we'll close this part of the meeting, move on to council comments, start with Steve.
Yeah, I have two items. First one, as you may recall, at the last council meeting, we did the proclamation for the amateur radio field day. I did attend that last Saturday and they were absolutely enthused that we recognized that event. And I didn't know this until one of the organizers told me it. But in the scoring of who wins that event internationally, they collect points. And so if city officials show up, they get an extra hundred points. So next year I'm going and I would recommend that we just have a revolving door of city officials. Okay. Okay, so they were really happy with that and so way to go Team Marion on that one. The second item, I've had two occurrences in, I'll just say within the last three weeks or so, where I've had a door to door salesperson come by. And I, because of some occurrences in Cedar Rapids of late that got some press, I was, you know, concerned about the authenticity of the sales activity that was going on. I won't go into the, into the details, but in interacting with Ryan on this, you know, we need to make sure we acquaint our citizens as to their rights should they be presented with a, a door to door salesperson coming to their house specifically, that they should, you know, freely ask for the, the city permit. Now I did learn that that is given via email. So the, the, the authorization would be presented probably on somebody's cell phone or tablet. But then I also learned because of my experience that we permit that to go until nine PM Mondays through Fridays, is it? All days, nine PM all days. And so I really think that here at a future meeting, I, I would really like us to give that ordinance some scrutiny and see if we need to tighten up the hours or any other elements of that. So just, and maybe the outcome of that is we don't do anything other than to remind ourselves that it's there and what the obligations are. So that's kind of what I would hope to do with that.
You have fun for me. Sarah?
So since it's July first, just a quick update on our summer free activities. Our partners in the parks department, we have just shy of six hundred participants in our, between Zumba, Sunrise Yoga and Down Dogs and Uptown. Of course, those are duplicated, some people come back. But A, we've heard great feedback on the condition of the parks and how, you know, mowing, how, just how, how beautiful they look. But also we have had some great attendance in the month of June despite the heat. So thankful for that partnership. That's all I got.
Well. How about the, the creek cleanup?
We had it and we cleaned up along the creek.
I did, God.
It went very well. We had a little over forty people show up. Had some great press from the Gazette and KCRG. Unfortunately, with the cedar flooding, it backed up Indian Creek some. So from Friday to Saturday, the creek rose instead of going down after rain. So it rose up and got quite dirty. So we didn't get in the creek as much as we had hoped to get items out of the creek. So we basically just, a few people got in and got some things, but basically just went along the banks from, well, Donnelly Park all the way down to the Menards, the bridge at one hundred. I think it was about forty bags of garbage we collected and got out of there. So, yeah. Well, hopefully we, potentially we'll do another one in August when the creek is low, so we can hopefully get some stuff out of there. And then I think maybe May of next year, we'll do the next one if we don't do one in August, before all the weeds grow up.
Thanks for your leadership on that.
Yeah.
It's been wonderful seeing the plaza being used. That was our goal is to activate that space. We rarely used to see people in that, in that park unless there was an actual organized event going on. And now people are there all the time using it, especially since the water's been turned on. It's been fun seeing people around that water feature playing. And the sails going up has really changed the whole aesthetic of the entire Uptown. I think driving through it just, just looks like a fantastic place. And so kudos to everyone on making that happen. And wish, wish everyone a happy and safe Independence Day celebration this week. Thursday night, we have the fireworks and fireflies as a reminder to everyone, please attend and enjoy the festivities. We'll be using the snack shack for the first time out there, I think. So serving, serving refreshments out of there. So enjoy and have a, have a safe holiday. Now, just a reminder also to all the residents that regarding the use of fireworks, you know, that is no longer in the city's control. The state law has now prohibited cities from, from controlling the use of fireworks as well as the sails. And so we appreciate everyone's patience with our city staff and, and our city council members, because there's, you know, it's not, not within our, we're not within our purview anymore. And so I hope everyone has a safe holiday. Thank you.